Twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one St. Paul Planning Commission. This meeting is being held. It's been, well, it's been determined that it's not practical or prudent for the commission and its committees to meet in person. In light of the COVID-nineteen health pandemic, it's not feasible for us to be present at our regular location. So all members will be present and attend via telephone or other electronic means. We will begin today's meeting by taking a roll call. Sunny?
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Here.
Commissioner Grill? Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Holt?
Here.
Commissioner Cantner?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell? Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Presley? Commissioner Riley? Commissioner Rizberg? Commissioner Said?
Here.
Commissioner Taggaya?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Underwood? Commissioner Yang? And Chair?
Here. Did we get enough hears for quorum, Sunny?
We got ten, yes.
Okay. So we'll move on to the first item of the agenda and its announcements by the Chair. I don't have any announcements this morning. Moving on to next item is Louise, do you have any announcements?
Yes, good morning, Chair, Commissioners, Members of Public. I do have a couple of announcements. Adjusting my video here. So I wanted to recognize one of the folks on my team, Addison Vang. He is, he's been with the city since 2019. He's a city planning technician. So I have some bittersweet news that he'll be leaving us to begin a new career opportunity at UW Extension in a position focused on food systems and broadband access. So the position will give him a chance to work with various communities in Wisconsin, including Mung Communities. And so certainly plays on his strengths and expertise and interests. But while at PED, he's really done a great job working with us on subdivision plat review and especially on HUD environmental review. He importantly has overseen the transition of the city to HUD's online environmental review system, which is, has been quite, quite the experience, getting to know that system and working through all of its quirks. He's fostered a really great relationship with our local and regional HUD field offices and worked closely with a variety of different city staff and PED and other departments in this role, as well as some of the city's community development organizations. I think Commissioner DeJoy has worked probably with him the most and in her role there at ESNDC and also working closely with the St. Paul Public Housing Agency on a variety of their projects. So he's really, you know, risen to the challenge. And we've had quite a few more of these reviews during, during the pandemic. And so I really appreciate all of the work he's done and will personally, you know, miss Addison and just wanted to recognize him today. So he's up on the screen and actually he's in the office there. So appreciate it, Addison. And the second quick item I had, I wanted to mention quickly was that we finally got a date on the calendar with the mayor and the council president to discuss the commission's request for an inclusionary zoning study. And so that will be with the Chair and the Vice Chair, the Mayor and the Council President on August fifth. So I appreciate it and that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Louise. So the next item of the agenda is today's public hearing. So today, the City of St. Paul Planning Commission is holding a public hearing on the Ford Side Zoning and Master Plan Amendments. Notice that the public hearing was published in the Legal Ledger on Monday, July 12, 2021, and was sent to the citywide early notification system list of recipients and other interested parties. The following rules and procedures will be used in conducting this hearing. If you're a member of the public and would like to speak, you will be asked to identify yourself at the appropriate time. The public should not utilize chat for communicating public testimony as it's not considered part of the public record. After I read the item number and title, I will open up the floor for Commissioners to speak, to ask questions of staff. After that, I will open the public hearing on the item. You will be limited to no more than three minutes. People who exceed the time limit may have their microphones muted by staff. Speakers who state their name and address for the record before, speakers should state their name and address for the record before beginning their presentation. Please mute yourself during the meeting, except during your three minutes when you're specifically called upon to speak. All presentations must be confined to the topics of the public hearing, which is the proposed Ford Side Zoning and Master Plan Amendments related to open space, open space lot specific requirements. Each speaker may speak only once. Speakers are requested to address all questions to the Chair and Planning Commissions may address questions to the speakers and to staff. When the, when the Planning Commission closes the public hearing and refers the matter to the Comp Plan Neighborhood Planning Committee and the planning staff will, and the planning staff will hold the record open for additional written testimony that they receive by 4:30 on Monday, July 26, 2021. Again, speakers are requested to limit their remarks to three minutes. At the conclusion of the presentation, I will ask three times if there's any people to speak in favor of of the Ford Side Open Space Lot Specific Requirements. And then there will be no further testimony. There will be a motion that the hearing be closed and taken under advisement by the Planning Commission. So we will begin and I think I will turn this over to Ms. Mohan for a quick presentation.
Hi Chair, I actually don't have a presentation for this item. I gave a pretty in-depth presentation at the last planning commission on June 11th. So I can take any questions that Commissioners have, but I didn't prepare anything for today.
All right. So at this point, I will open it up to Commissioners to ask any questions for staff. If there are any questions, otherwise we'll move on to the public portion. All right, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand. So I will go ahead and call on any public members to just either raise your hand on the Zoom feature or excuse me, the Teams feature. And I'm seeing Ms. Mohan.
Yes, I don't have a presentation, but I did want to just let the Commissioners know that I am joined today by Tia Anderson, who reviews many of the projects on, all the projects on Highland Bridge for the Department of Safety Inspection. And then Melanie McMahon from the Mayor's Office is the executive lead. So if there are questions that come up that are perhaps beyond the scope of this hearing, they're also here. And then Tia is also a really valuable resource for questions for, I just wanted to let everyone know.
All right, thank you. I'll move on to the public portion again and I'll call on Ms. Hunt. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes. Kate Hunt? Ms. Hunt? We can't hear you if you're trying to speak. I see that you put your hand down. Oh, no. Ms. Hunt?
Yes, can you hear us now?
Yes, if you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Kate Hunt and I live at 2081 Highland Parkway. Chair Morales and Commissioners, Members of the Public, I ask the Planning Commission to reject the proposed resolution amending definitions of open space and building lot coverage at Highland Bridge. How does a resident of Highland Park benefit from approving this resolution? And how do St. Paul taxpayers who are subsidizing $275 million to Ryan companies, the developer, benefit from this resolution? The answers are as clear as the thirty-two pages of baffling justification for this zoning resolution. It seems that benefits to other parties are clearer. The resolution pushed by the city, which counts private property like rooftop gardens, patios and balconies as open space and changes the definition of building lot coverage benefits Ryan. How? It benefits Ryan because it helps Ryan meet open space requirements while boosting building density. Why is the city aggressively driving this resolution? It benefits too. The resolution is a blunt maneuver to squeeze even more density from the 2017 master plan without the city and Ryan getting involved in inconvenient public zoning debates and being subjected to public scrutiny. By changing the definitions of open space and building lot coverage, no taxpayer guardrails will be left to hold back uncontrolled development. This resolution comes right out of Alice in Wonderland where reality is distorted. In this case, private property is called open, not to the public. It takes thirty-two pages to reinvent the common sense understanding of open space and even the city's own open space guidelines in unimaginable ways. So now a concrete patio with a small potted plant would apparently be open space. Here's a simple idea. Shouldn't open space just be the lot space where the building isn't and the public is? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. I see that you have Mr. Howard Miller. Would you like to comment as well?
Yes, I would. Thank you. My name is Howard Miller. I live at 2081 Highland Parkway, two blocks from the Highland Bridge site. Chairman Morales, Commission Members, Ms. Mohan. What you are being asked today borders on fantasy. A major project that has been in the eyes, public eyes for decades, which has been zoned since November of 2017, which has a library of data concerning building design, including a 111-page document entitled Ford Site Open Space Guidelines, which was published in February 2011 and approved by your commission. You are being told today to ignore all of this. We are, we are told that other measures are in place to protect the soft edges of the development, that the floor area ratio will limit too much mass. But if the definition of open space ostensibly the lot where the building is not, is eliminated, how is the FAR to be measured? Is the floor space going to include balconies, atriums, dog walks already established as open space under this revision? Or will these become part of area? If they become part of area, then the ratio is thrown completely off. And as the area increases, the proportion of lot space used for landscaping, parking, et cetera, et cetera, goes to the height, the building, the height of the building can then increase. That is what we're talking about. This allows for unbridled development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I will turn to the Commissioners to see if they have any questions. I suppose for either Ms. Hunt or Mr. Miller. Seeing none, I will call on the next person that wants to provide any testimony this morning. Calling again to Members of the public who would like to provide information on today's public hearing.
Hello?
Hi. Could you state your name and address for the record? Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. My name is Kathy McGuire. I live at 2203 Fairmount.
Okay, and what would you like to say, Ms. McGuire?
You know, we've been told that the 138-page Board Master Plan represents the culmination of decades of studies, planning and public engagement. The revered Board Master Plan is actually very clear about the priority and definition of open space at the board site. I will quote directly from the Board Master Plan. Page nine, quote, "Open space, vegetation and public places will form the backbone of the community, bringing people together through nature for recreation and community events. A network of parks, trails and attractive public streets will provide the fabric of places and spaces for people." Page thirteen, under Genesis of the Plan, Community Engagement, quote, "Some people wanted the site to look like the rest of Highland. For this latter group, concerns focused on the scale of buildings, the number of people that would live and work there, traffic and the amount of open space," end quote. Page twenty-seven, quote, "The unique characteristics of the four districts are context-sensitive to the Highland area and Mississippi River Valley, provide a desired mix of uses across the site. Incorporate design elements that balance larger building scales with open space to maintain the neighborhood feel throughout the site." And, 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 and. Page eight, hello? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, page twenty-eight, quote, "The Ford Site will be developed over time to become a vibrant mixed-use urban neighborhood with interwoven green space." Page twenty-eight, "The public realm is intended to serve as the connected tissue within the site and to the neighborhood beyond. It is made up of the space between buildings, the right-of-way for streets and trails, the central stormwater spine and the park spaces. The private space between the right-of-way and buildings will be further designed, defined by design standards to be added to the Ford Site zoning districts," end quote. In the four overarching goals for the site, it talks about civic and open space uses. It talks about a system of open space resources and amenities. Page thirty-seven, "The scale and mass of buildings shall be moderated with the use of vegetative buffers, stepbacks and upper floors, courtyards." Page forty-seven, I'm almost finished, "The flora and fauna on the site will provide aesthetic and health benefits for all inhabitants and visitors to the site." Lastly, a more quantitative reference is found in Chapter Five, under Building Type Standards, Table 5.2, where building lot coverage is consistently defined as seventy percent maximum and open space lot coverage as twenty-five percent minimum for all building types, except for multi-unit homes, townhouses and row houses, which have greater requirements for open space. My words, there should be no difficulty with interpretation or understanding the concept of lot coverage and open space as defined in the master plan. This is fourth grade math. The community is not fooled by this attempt to rewrite the rules. I ask the Planning Commission respectfully to reject this resolution amending the definitions of open space and lot coverage at the Ford Site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. Is there any questions for Ms. McGuire from Commissioners? All right, seeing none, I will move on to call again on any Members of the public who would like to provide testimony this morning. Second call for any Members of the public. And then final call to provide input on today's public hearing related to the Ford Site. I see a chat. I see Julie Calpa?
Yes, yep.
Go ahead, Ms. Calpa. You have three minutes. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Julie Calpa, 1763 Juliette. Just want to back up with the last two people expressed and just a concern about having so many years of discussion and planning and then making changes at the last minute to forfeit open space is a big concern to me and that's my brief feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this morning, Ms. Calpa. I will call one last time for any additional public member to state their comments. I've seen no additional raised hands or people trying to speak. I will call on Commissioner Grill for a motion. Commissioner Grill?
He's not in attendance today.
Okay, well then I would call on someone from the Comprehensive Planning Committee for a motion. So just to be clear, what we need is for a motion to close the public hearing and keep the record open for written testimony until, usually we do Monday at 4:30.
So move Commissioner Holt.
Motion by Commissioner Holt. Is there a second?
This Commissioner stated a second.
Motion by Commissioner Holt, seconded by Commissioner Said. The motion is to close today's public hearing and keep the record open for additional written testimony until next Monday, the 26th at 4:30. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Sunny, could we get a roll call?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair Rango Morales?
Yes.
Lieutenant.
So their motion to close the public hearing and keep the record open is approved. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is zoning committee. I will turn to Commissioner Baker.
Thanks Chair. The, there is one agenda item for the upcoming site land review meeting scheduled for Tuesday, July 27th. And it's the Howells, 520 Payne Avenue. And we don't have any items for the upcoming July 29th zoning committee meeting. That meeting has been canceled. At our July 15th zoning committee meeting, we had three items. The first item is 695 Grand Avenue. That was conditional use permit for building height with variances. If you remember to my colleagues, you saw this item come, you saw this project come before you last time and you were voting on the rezoning part of it. So now this is kind of the second stage, which is the conditional use permit and variances. And just based on some of the complexities, complexities of this and also the interest in this project, we will have a very brief presentation by Ms. Sigwar to take you through elements of this application. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Sigwar.
Thank you. Just gonna share my screen here. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right, thank you Commissioners. So as Commissioner Baker stated, the case I have for you today is 695 Grand Conditional Use Permit Variances. I'm gonna do a shortened version of the presentation, but it still gets technical. So we can always go back if you, if you have questions. All right, so just to, to reiterate, on July 9th, you voted to recommend approval of the rezoning for the application for T3 and denial of the rezoning to outside of the East Grand Overlay District. This is a recommendation speaking forward to the City Council. Today's cases for the conditional use permit for 59 feet, 10 inch height, variance for front setback from Grand Avenue, front outdoor patio and variances from the East Grand Avenue Overlay District, restrictions for footprint size and height. The site is in a mixed-use area with mix of commercial and residential uses, nearby transit and a bikeway. The applicant proposes to develop a five-story mixed-use building with four commercial spaces, eighty market rate apartments with a mix of unit types ranging from alcoves to two-bedroom and dens, eighty bicycle parking spaces, ninety-nine vehicular parking stalls. This is a proposed street level plan. Pedestrian entrance for the apartments is proposed off of St. Albans in the teal right here. The primary pedestrian entrance for the commercial spaces are located along Grand. Two are off the proposed patio. One is at the corner of, of Grand and St. Albans. Vehicular access is proposed with two curb cuts. Curb cut to Grand is entrance-only for retail customers to access the enclosed parking area on the first floor. And the curb cut to St. Albans is exit-only for those retail customers and then entrance, an entrance and exit for the apartment residents accessing the underground parking. Here's a description of the, of the zoning for the area, for the site. The proposed building would have a footprint of 30,500 square feet, height of 5910. Total floor area of 124,000 square feet, including parking and an FIR of 3.0. The current East Grand Avenue Overlay District restricts footprints to 25,000 square feet, building size above ground to 75,000 square feet, height to 36 feet. And the proposed T3 zoning allows height to 55 feet plus additional height based on setbacks, but 25 feet plus setbacks from the rear property line where it's adjacent to our T2. So this case includes the variances for the height, footprint and size regulations of the overlay as another path to, to getting out of these restrictions. I'm gonna explain the parts of the building height that are triggering the conditional use permit. So for the east property line, in T3, the proposed height of 5910 is permitted by right at a setback of four feet, 10 inches. As you can see on the drawing here of the fifth, of the fifth floor setbacks, much of the building is setback more than 15 feet, especially the northeast corner. And along here and the, and part of the fifth floor is setback three feet from the property line. The conditional use permit, or, or sorry, at the three-foot setback, a height of 58 feet is allowed by right. And you can see that here, there's a little bit of overlap. So the conditional use permit application is for the 5910 at this, at the three-foot setback. The parapet doesn't, does not count towards this height. And then for the rear property line, at the eight-foot setback, the height permitted by right is 33 feet, which is shown on the drawing of the section for near the building corners as the green dot right there. And the maximum proposed height is 47 feet, which shows the yellow dot. And at the 18-foot setback, the height allowed by right is 43 feet, which is this blue dot along here, the section near the building corners and the section near the middle of the building. And the proposed height is 5910, which is shown as the pink dot. So the conditional use permit is for this additional height. It's essentially the, the space between the upper and the lower dots or the area outside of this solid green line labeled D. And this is another way to, to look at the portion of the fifth floor that's not compliant with the, with the height limits. So this red part along the, the south and the east side. All right, so onto the findings for the conditional use permit for the 5910 inch height. The extent, location, intensity is compliant with the comprehensive plan and any sub-area plans. The proposed height is supported by the fact that Grand Avenue was designated as a mixed-use area that's vital for growth by providing the highest density outside of downtown. It's supported by these policies because the building supports the existing transit. It's been designed with setbacks and stepbacks to minimize the perception of height and bulk, including the greater setbacks in the middle portion of the building. And the fifth floor being stepped back 18 feet from the north and south property lines. The height is supported by these district 16 Summit Hill Plan policies because the building respects the character through its use of stone, masonry, decorative. Uh, the height is supported by these district sixteen Summit Hill Plan policies because the building respects the character through its use of stone masonry, decorative metal and design that breaks up the scale and massing. It meets the traditional neighborhood design standards through its quality materials, human scale and greater setbacks that break up the massing and height. And while the neighborhood plan has policy G-ten about, uh, scale and height limits for for the overlay, the Summit Hill Association supports the conditional use permit. And the building as it's designed and noted that the purpose of the size limitations were to retain human scale walkability, um, foster local ownership with the building, which the building does. Uh, they Summit Hill also noted the need for investment increased density and the need for this type of housing and that the look, visual impact and height is in line with the surrounding buildings. The use will provide adequate ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion. Um, as I talked about earlier, the curb cut to Grand is ingress only for retail customers and this limits the amount of, um, of cars entering from from, um, or turning across the sidewalk from Grand. And then the curb cut to St. Albans is egress only for retail and provides ingress and egress for, um, residents and this limits the amount of cars, um, entering from St. Albans. The applicant also submitted trip generation analysis that concluded that the development is not anticipated to noticeably, um, impact traffic operations. Uh, the use will not be detrimental to the existing character of or danger, health, safety or welfare. The height is compatible with the surrounding context, um, given the surrounding buildings mostly ranging from thirty-nine to fifty feet. The height has been designed with setbacks and stepbacks, especially at the northeast corner. You can see here in this image here. Um, and the fifth floor being stepped back along the alley and, um, along Grand Avenue. And the building, um, been designed with with, um, stone masonry and decorative metal that fits in with historic neighborhood character. The use will not impede the normal and orderly development. Um, the building is consisted with with the existing development, which is fully developed. Um, and then the use shall conform to regulations of the district that it's located in. This can be met, uh, subject to the requested variances and rezoning to T-three. All right, moving on to the variances for the East Grand Avenue Overlay District for building footprint, building size and building height. Um, the variances are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. The variances, um, are in harmony with the intent of zoning codes, some of which are listed here. Um, they are in harmony with the intent of the proposed T-three zoning districts. It provides higher density mixed-use development, supporting the existing transit, provides rental housing with modern amenities that the Summit Hill Association has stated that the neighborhood is in need of. Uh, the development meets the general purposes of the building size limitations of the of the overlay, which Summit Hill Association has stated was to retain human scale and walkability, foster local ownership and discourage big box chain stores. Um, the variances are in, are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, you've seen all these, uh, policies before. The variances allow for a dynamic, um, higher density mixed-use development that brings more activity, uh, street level activity and more residence. The existing site is currently underutilized and allows for a higher density development in a well-served, um, walkable transit area. Uh, the building is meant to design with setbacks and stepbacks, minimize perception of height. And the variances support development of new housing in a mixed-use area. Um, you've also seen these supportive policies from the district sixteen neighborhood plan before. Um, the variances allow for development that contains parking within the site, follow following traditional neighborhood standards that apply to properties within the overlay district, sports, local businesses. Um, and while the Summit Hill Association is currently in the process of updating their plan and considering changes, um, policy G-ten is currently in effect. Um, but I, as I mentioned earlier, the Summit Hill Association supports the building as designed and they noted that the general purposes are to retain human scale walkability, local foster local ownership and, um, discourage chain stores, which the proposal does. The third finding is that the applicant has established practical difficulties in complying with the provision, um, and that the property owner uses it in a reasonable manner. Um, a mixed-use development on this site is a reasonable use that is consistent with the comp plan. Uh, the applicant has noted that since the overlay is established in two thousand and six, no mixed-use developments have occurred substantially due to the practical difficulties created for, uh, for such development by the restrictive limits of the overlay. The applicant notes that the site is one of the largest on Grand at zero point three acres and the large size exacerbates the impact of the restrictive height and bulk limits of the district and contributes to a greater conflict between the density, um, sought sought with the, uh, twenty forty comp plan and the development density under the overlay district. The applicant has stated that reducing the building to four stories would result in changes that would reduce the project benefits um, and could also reduce compliance with existing plans and traditional neighborhood design standards, um, including possibly replacing the retail space with and street level activity with residential units, making the building no longer be be mixed use, uh, fewer building setbacks, reconfiguration of the building massing, reduced quality of building materials and a greater number of smaller units. Um, so the East Grand Avenue overlated, oh, overlay district regulations for building height footprint and size create practical difficulties for the project's design and limits its ability to respond to plan policies. And the fact that no new mixed-use developments like this have occurred over the last fifteen years um, is evident that practical practical difficulties for use of the property in a reasonable manner is consistent with the comprehensive plan. All right, the plaintiff landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. Um, the property is unique being on a proper prominent corner that's substantially larger than the majority of other lots than the overlay district. Um, this exacerbates the impact of the restrictive height and bulk limits of the overlay um, and the development capacity of the site under the comparably older restrict regulations of the overlay district, which is a circumstance not created by the landowner. Um, the variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the in the, um, proposed T-three district and the current B B-two district. And the variance will not alter the essential character, um, because this part of Grand is a mixed-use transit street, has a mix of housing types and densities and and stores and smaller shops. Um, and many buildings are located or many neighboring buildings are in the thirty-nine to fifty range and there's a lot larger six-story building about a block away. And the building has design features that break up the mass and scale of the building and reduce the perceived height and provide transition to this running area. Okay, moving on to the variance for the front yard setback, the front yard to increase it from ten feet maximum to eighteen feet. The variance is in harmony with the general, uh, purposes and intent of the zoning code. The variance for the outdoor patio is is, um, in harmony with the code and, um, the T-three intent, which is provide higher density pedestrian and transit-oriented mixed-use development. It's in harmony with the T-three design standards that call for buildings that anchor the corner, front yard landscaping and building facade continuity. Um, the variances is in, um, is consisted with comprehensive plan. The comp plan has policies that promote high-quality urban design, pedestrian friendliness and the variance provides for patio that provides pedestrian-friendly streetscape that enhances the realm. And District sixteen has has policies that encourage pedestrian activity, beautification efforts and design, um, standards that include pedestrian-focused street saves. Right, um, the the third findings that the applicant has established practical practical difficulties in complying with the provision and, um, that the property owner was to use it in a reasonable manner. Outdoor patio is reasonable reasonable use for for the site. Um, eighteen-foot setback allows for an adequately site-sized, uh, outdoor seating area that cannot be sufficiently accommodated with a ten-foot setback. Uh, the fourth finding is that the plaintiff landowner is not is is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. The building design includes a prominent entrance to anchor the corner of the site. Um, it's consistent with the traditional neighborhood design standards. The outdoor patio is placed in the center of the building, which is the best place to provide for pedestrian-focused street sake, streetscape activity. Um, and exceeding the ten-foot maximum allows for adequately sized seating area with sufficient circulation space. The fifth finding is that the variance will not permit any use not allowed in the zoning district. Uh, that's true. And the sixth finding is that the variance will not alter the essential character um, of the area. The variances to provide more adequately sized outdoor seating area will enhance um, pedestrian experience. And there are a lot of patios along Grand, um, and then many setback, many, uh, multifamily apartments are setback from the street. So it's consistent with that development pattern. The zoning committee recommendation, um, recommended approval of, uh, conditional use permit for the fifty-nine-ten inch building height, approval of the front yard setback variance, um, approval of the building footprint variance, building size variance and building height variance. Um, subject to the following additional conditions, um, that the property, um, will be rezoned to T-three neighborhood district and that final plans to provide as only administrator will, um, be in substantial compliance with the plan submitted and approved as part of this application. And I can take any questions you may have.
Uh, Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Baker.
I just wanted to add that, um, in addition to, um, Ms. Sigworth's presentation, I wanted to highlight that, uh, the zoning committee voted, um, for approval of staff's recommendation, um, on a five to one vote.
Thank you for that, uh, Commissioner Baker. I will, um, so the motion coming out of committee is to approve the the three variances and the C, uh, well, sorry, the conditional use permit and the variance request. Um, I will turn over to fellow commissioners for any questions for Ms. Mohan. Excuse me, Ms. Sigworth, uh, about, um, her presentation. Commissioner Moore?
Good morning and thank you, Chair. Um, Ms. Sigworth, uh, one of the earlier slides that you had, um, talked about, um, like, uh, a three-foot area, um, with with, uh, what I could see was was like limited, um, space around it. Um, I'm just curious about what are some of the potential, um, um, like hazards or or dangers, um, with approving that area. Thank you.
Right, um, thank you, Commissioner Moore. Um, so are you referring to, um, to this, the three-foot um, setback at the east property line? Right.
Yes, 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 I believe so.
Okay, um, yes, so, um, so the the project does meet the setback requirements, um, along the east property line. Um, and so so it meets the requirements for that. And, um, in terms of the height, it can just be, um, a a height of of fifty-eight feet is permitted, um, by right in T-three. Um, so at this at this level, um, it's just one foot.
So, sorry, I I think we're speaking on the wrong, I think it was an earlier slide. You, oh. I I thought it was an area like where potential, oh, so, okay, yep, um, you almost had it. One more, one more over. Uh, nope, nope, I think the other way. Ah. Now I'm confused. I'm so sorry. I should have written down which slide it was. I'm sorry. Um, so so that was a height that wasn't, okay.
Um, yes, so this is this is a a diagram showing where the height, um, because the height is related to the setbacks here.
Okay.
Believe it, these are the only diagrams that I have in trying to.
I, okay, no, that that was it. I I confused the first diagram. You see where it says fifth floor setbacks and then there was a three-foot area? I thought that was, um, space between the the next property and the the current property that we're looking at.
Yeah, so this is the the setback from the from the east property line. So this, you know, the sidewalk would be along here.
Okay, okay. And I was just, and and so it was my understanding that that this area, um, is is out outside of what would normally be permissible? Is that correct? That having such a small, small areas that, am I understanding that correctly?
Um, Commissioner Moore, um, so this does meet the setback requirement. So so this this three feet, there's no side side setback required, so they could build all the way up to this property line, but they are setback three feet for this portion of the building and they're setback greater, um, along these other, these other portions of the building.
Uh-huh.
So they technically they could build up to this dash line here. So they are, they are more more than, um, meeting the requirements for the setback.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I understand now. Thank you. Thank you.
I I I have, uh, if no one else has a question, I'll I'll call again on Commissioners. Commissioner Holst?
Just a quick question about understanding here. Why a cup, not a variance? And this is, you know, maybe more, uh, just just general zoning information here. Uh, why does the height need a a conditional use permit versus a a a variance to the zoning? And what does that actually mean to to the project or how that might go in the future? Are cups just as permanent as a variance?
Um, Chair Rangel Morales and, uh, Commissioner Holst. Um, so for our height, you know, it's in our code that we have conditional use permits for for certain uses and um, it's common to do them for for heights. That that's how our zoning code is written. And, um, in order to meet those, um, in order to get that conditional use permit, um, there are the findings that I had talked about, um, related to um, compliance with the comprehensive plan and, um, providing adequate ingress and egress. Um, the use is not detrimental to the neighborhood character. It will not impede normal and orderly development. So so those are the findings that it has to meet for the conditional use permit. And, um, I'm not exactly sure on the reason, um, for why our zoning code is set up with, um, conditional use permits for heights. I think that's just a um, a standard process. Variances deal more with, um, with the specifics of the site and kind of hardships that are made, um, made because of a unique circumstance of a site. And, um, and conditional use permits, um, are more, um, just kind of related generally to, um, to to any project that's that's in its own. Um, so so they just have to show that they meet those those requirements for a conditional use permit. Um, and I'm not sure if anybody else can step in on that, on that question. I I, um, I hope that helps a little bit.
Yes, thank you.
So calling again on any Commissioners for any additional questions. All right, Ms. Sigworth, I have a comment, um, and and perhaps it will turn into a question, but it with regards to findings with the for the variance on, um, you know, practical difficulties as well as, uh, circumstances unique to the property. I noticed that the rationale by staff for for permitting these variants appear to be the over-restrictiveness of the east Grand Overly District. And I I find it a bit confusing that we're you we're saying that the purpose of a variance is supposed to be tied to the property. And we're essentially saying that the zoning in this property is so restrictive that we're going to use that zoning in and of itself to justify the variance, uh, approval, which which sort of doesn't make any sense to me in that that's exactly, I mean, that's what the zoning regulation is intended to do. And we're we need a variant, the variance request is intended to a request that we go outside of those zoning requirements, but we're essentially just putting a chicken and egg type argument here by saying that the zoning is so restrictive that we need to allow a variance to go outside of those zoning regulations. Um, could you help me understand? I mean, it it seems when I, when I, when I, when I see this project, it seems that based on what the, uh, you know, developer commented on when we were having the discussion of rezoning, that that they definitely could go smaller and that they could try to, um, it it seemed like this was a completely an economic consideration and that there's not, nothing necessarily impractical with the land itself, other than they just want to build as big as they do. Commissioner Baker?
Uh, Chair, I I think I understand what you're saying. And, um, during our last zoning, and I'll definitely defer to Ms. Sigworth, but during our last zoning, uh, committee meeting, I specifically asked the applicant, um, in getting into a lot of the questions, um, that we received from the community concerning just a smaller footprint, smaller project. Um, and the the ask was, can you build smaller and are you open to building smaller? Are you open to having those conversations with, uh, the community? Because we definitely received a lot of comments of wanting there to be, uh, you know, a smaller space. Um, the feedback that we received from the applicant is that, um, there were many, um, items taken into consideration and change based on uh, the community's feedback was was. and change based on the community's feedback was, was one part of the answer. I think another part of the answer is, is also in keeping with parts of the comprehensive plan and it being mixed use. The practicality, the practicality in addition to potential financial hardship was shared as well. So the response was that it was not just a financial matter, that there were other elements that they explained that went into play in being able to not necessarily with a smaller, smaller project, smaller building. But I definitely want to turn it over to Ms. Sigworth, she want to add anything?
Yes, thank you Commissioner Baker. Yeah, I, I just wanted to add that in a, in a letter to Summit Hill Association. And this is also discussed at the zoning committee meeting, that the applicant, if, if they were to do a shorter building at four stories, it may not be able to, to achieve the, the, the positive benefits to the community. And I just briefly touched on this, that it might result in the residential uses, units replacing the retail space in the ground floor. And that would not result in the building being mixed use, which is kind of the guidance of the, of the T three zoning district. If it were to, you know, if they, if they were to lower to four stories, it would, you know, it might result in partially enclosed parking instead of underground. Parking might be visible from the street, which is, does not fit with the design standards of the, of the traditional neighborhood. There might be fewer building setbacks on all sides, which could reduce the transition to other, to the surrounding buildings. It could result in reduced building sub material quality, which could reduce the, the, the consistency with the character of the neighborhood. It would result in the removing of the public plaza and after seating on grand. And this is in compliant policy to, to increase the pedestrian friendliness of the area. And, and it's also consistent with traditional neighborhood standards. And then the redesign might reduce the number of larger, larger apartment units and maybe more more studios and alcoves and that Summit Hill Neighborhood Association really wants these larger units that would allow for people in the neighborhood, neighborhood to stay as they age and they want to downsize from their neighborhood, from their Victorian houses in the neighborhood. So, so those, those are kind of the, the, the result, those are maybe, maybe be the result of a shorter property that the applicant has, has stated.
I, I see that the Commissioner Riley and Taggy have, have comments, so I'll call on them and I'll come back. Commissioner Riley?
I, I would like to, I would like to defer to Commissioner Taggy, if his hand was up before mine.
All right, Commissioner Taggy.
Thank you Commissioner Riley. I wanted to just respond briefly to Commissioner Wrangle Morales' point, which I'm not sure has been completely addressed. So he, he rightly says, well, hang on, if we're just, if we're just looking at the East Grand Avenue overlay district, then is this not property specific? And, and that's the piece that I wanted to really engage with here. So I think the point, it is confusing, but I think the point being made is that this lot specifically and the way it interacts with the East Grand Avenue overlay district creates those practical difficulties and circumstances unique to the property under C and D. In this case, there are four things I think which are relevant. So it is the, the sheer size of the lot, the fact that it is a corner lot, the fact that the lot slopes in grades. And yes, the economic insight planning as well, which, which economic considerations alone cannot constitute, constitute practical difficulties, but they can be part of the reckoning. The, the really important thing to understand is that this lot is two hundred and forty feet long, which is about four to six times larger than the typical forty or sixty foot lot that is otherwise contained in the overlay district. And the problem with that is that the overlay district imposes a fixed number, a fixed lot size limit of twenty five thousand square feet. And so that just doesn't affect most lots in the neighborhood. That, that restriction would only kick in at a lot of at least a hundred and seventy or so feet lo- long, assuming a hundred percent lot coverage, so maybe a hundred and ninety even in, in practice. So that's kind of the, one of the biggest pieces, that the overlay really wouldn't prevent a comparable T two or T three zone building from covering the entire lots, aside from, you know, an, an atypical oversized lot in this district. I think the corner lot is also relevant, so that creates a number of practical difficulties. For example, if you're trying to comply with the design standards for T two or T three, Design Standard Five says use an established building facade line, which was sort of forced them to create an L shaped building with a landlocked cutout in the northwest corner if they went, if they were held to the overlay district in, in that regard. And then the, the sloping lots that sort of slopes from west to east down, I think six or so feet, that also helps create some of these, well, it, it changes the measurement for height. It also puts certain restrictions on the site planning in terms of where you locate the parking entrances and also how you measure the building's sort of height and sizing in terms of trying to accommodate that, that street level, because you're trying to get sufficient height in all your ceilings while also meeting the street for kind of for, for access, right, without having step ups from, from the streets. And then of course, as Ms. Sigworth already pointed out, the economic insight planning factors. So when the neighborhood will discuss in detail, Ms. Sigworth references the May twentieth letter because the District sixteen Board reached out and asked specifically about, well, could this be a shorter building? And what kind of trade offs would be required? And it, there, there were a number of practical difficulties cited in terms of having to lose the retail or having to degrade a lot of the materials and choices and setbacks and setbacks, which are required and do speak to design guidelines, speak to the two thousand and six Summit Hill Plan and, and create a lot of that vibrancy in street for an activation, which is, you know, is a centerpiece of the twenty forty plan. So that, I think, is, is a, is an important qualification, which talks about how the, the site itself and its, its placement and size do relate to criteria C and D.
Thank you for that commentary and Commissioner. I will go on to Commissioner Riley.
Thank you Chair. I have a lot I could say, I think you all know where I stand on this particular project. But I, I do want to address something that the Chair said, and I think since he's attorney, he said it better than I can. But I, I think it's, be happy to share all of my reasons to, for the vote for denial of this, this case. And I, I definitely appreciate the work that the developer and the Summit Hill Neighborhood Association have done to try and get a project that appears to work as best as possible. But I, I still am struggling with the concept of using the zoning code itself as a justification for a practical difficulty. I mean, we, we declined to remove the property out of the overlay district because the existence of the overlay district appeared to be important. And that overlay district may very well disappear upon completion of the Summit Hill Association's long overdue neighborhood plan, which is currently underway. That plan could call for the city to remove the overlay district from, from the zoning code altogether in favor of something else, it could call for rezoning the entirety of Grand Avenue in favor of something else. We sort of don't know where that path is going. And so I'm struggling with, with making, with sort of recommending approval of something that may not end up being able to be built in a future state. We're talking about a conversation about a comp plan that is from two thousand and six in this scenario. And then I, I'm also really struggling with the practical difficulty associated with the large size of the site. That, that I'm really having a hard time making that make sense. And then, you know, the, the applicant keeps, keeps mentioning that the goals of the twenty forty comprehensive plan require that they construct a building that contains a mix of uses. And, and that's just inherently false. All four key districts state, and this is the language from the zoning code, a compatible mix of commercial and residential uses within buildings, yes, that's an option, but also sites and blocks. And Grand Avenue is itself inherently a mixed use corridor. In fact, that whole, even if you just go to one block in either direction, you have multiple choices of housing types, you have lots of different kinds of retail, including one of the more, more robust sort of retail environments, which retail and, and commercial and service establishments are located in, in homes, because the historic character of the neighborhood is so, is, has been so important. And so, you know, for those, those are some of the reasons I voted to, to deny this. It sort of feels like we're squishing something in that doesn't fit and changing the rules so that it can purely based on what sound like sort of, you know, if, if, if this, then, then you can't have that. And, and this is a problem I run into, you know, when I'm having conversations with my kids, right? They get all, they get all excited about something and then I said, well, you can't have it unless you do this. And that's sort of a weird threatening activity. And so I just, I, I'm really struggling with, with some of the arguments that the applicant has made and the strong arguments that I, we have heard from the neighborhood, you know, again, four to one opposed to this particular development. So thank you, thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments Commissioner, moving on to Commissioner Hood.
Thank you Chair, and also thank you staff for this report. This is a tough project, you know, it's a tough area to get development, we've seen that, we haven't seen anything in the last fifteen years. And at first I was skeptical, can the developer do this, how are they going to do this? I think they've done a fantastic job engaging with Summit Hill Association. They have gained support from the Summit Hill Association, which from my experience is not always an easy thing to do. So if you can do that, I mean frankly, you're doing something right. Moreover, I think that staff has done a fantastic job on this staff report and they have fully convinced me that this, this should move forward and I think they've made a legally sound and compelling argument as for why it should. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I trust the staff report and I trust the Summit Hill Association in this regard and I would, you know, support and want to move this thing forward, thank you.
All right, any additional questions or comments by commissioners? Commissioner Taggy?
Thank you Chair and thank you for the grace of my fellow commissioners in taking my extended comments. I wanted to address sort of one elephant in the room, which is sort of this, this notion of consistency with the comprehensive plan altering the essential character of the surrounding area, because this really gets to the heart of the overlay district and kind of why it was put in place. When I was preparing for this meeting, I went back and read the two thousand and six neighborhood plan, which, which gave birth to the overlay district itself. And we focused on the, the height and budget restrictions that emerged from it, but it's clear to me that the neighborhood had mixed and sometimes conflicting priorities for Grand Avenue. If you, if you read the division statements and then read sort of the, the G policies which are related to Grand Avenue, there was, there was a lot of concern for preserving local ownership and businesses. And so G seven talks about that and a lot of concern about restricting what they called formula businesses. There was a lot of concern for enhancing the street scape and making sure that at street level, the, the street was active and had a, and had these sort of vibrant uses, particularly with regards to commercial uses. There was also desires to make sure that part, that, that the street didn't look to be very auto centric. So parking was supposed to be underground or screened. And they really cared about design guidelines, also neighborhood uses. So we've heard a lot about B two versus B three, but that was really about preventing things like car rental, pawn shops, natural entertainment. So there was a sort of mix of community priorities. And it was felt that that, that essentially putting in place these, these fixed guidelines was really about stopping big box stores coming in, stopping a Best Buy or a Target or a Walmart buying up a load of plots on Grand Avenue and, and then moving in. So if, if you read the vision statement in the plan, the building really encapsulates everything the neighborhood said they wanted back in, back in two thousand and six. And to my mind, pages thirty four and thirty five really essentially describe, describe this building. That paragraph is surprisingly prescient today, it talks about the growing demand for empty nest to housing, providing a catalyst for redevelopment in the neighborhood. Several Grand Avenue properties could be candidates for infill developments. And it says that these developments could, could provide opportunities for new business thereby existing, sorry, and the upper level housing could allow folks to stay in Summit Hill without having to have single family homes. And then it says the scale required to achieve the commercial housing mix in these developments would lead to development economics that could support underground parking thereby reducing much of the development's potential negative impact. And those potential issues including scale, character, massing and, and traffic. So e- even then, if the, the neighborhood plans sort of engaged in this and came up with the, the, the overlay, but looking at it just as a series of height and scale restrictions kind of misses the point. When I look at the building versus the two thousand and six neighborhood plan, so if you look at the ground level, at street level, we're getting a continue, a fully activated continuous facade facing Grand Avenue. That includes outdoor seating, active public spaces and public art, both of which were specifically mentioned in the two thousand and six plan. The frontage isn't one big monolith, it's broken down into four separate retail units. And each retail unit is at a human neighborhood compatible scale. Two of the anchor tenants are well loved locally owned restaurants, that is a rarity for a development like this. And that speaks to G seven locally owned businesses and G eleven formula restrictions. The parking is fully structured and hidden from the street, which is again specifically mentioned in the plan. And also several aspects of the design do speak to the historicity and do echo historic patterns. So that is the, the bookended towers, that is the, which, which very much echo the streetcar buildings along the avenue with those two arms at the front. And that's reinforced by things like material choices, patterned brick and wrought iron, both of which are again mentioned in the two thousand and six plan. And the, the large balconies echoing covered portraits across the street. So just as a, as a generalistic comment, you know, I, I wanted to respond to a lot of the public comment that has sort of been put in opposition and saying, oh, you know, this is, this is not in keeping and point out all the ways which this is in keeping with, with the plan. And, and then I, I don't want to repeat my comments from committee, but essentially I pointed out that this notion that Grand Avenue is a historic main street isn't necessarily true. It actually has a, a mix of buildings, most of which are not, don't have particular historic or architectural merits. So this very much maintains the rhythm and historic nature of the avenue as it stands. That's all I have.
Thank you for those comments Commissioner Taggy. Any additional comments? All right, so having heard all that, I guess, I, I don't know how much of a difference it makes, but I, I will, I, I'm just going to go ahead and say it, because I think, I, I'm still having trouble wrapping my mind around it. And, and I'm going to think it out loud and see if, if I'm missing something. But essentially, you know, we have, the city is, has a zoning code. And this particular area is also governed by the East Grand Overly District. So if anybody wants to deviate from that, they usually have to file for a conditional use permit or a variance request. And, and that, that's essentially to go outside of what the zoning code and conditional use allow. And what we're saying here is, okay, well, for purposes of, of two of the standards that a applicant needs to meet to go outside of the zoning and or overlay district, the justification that we're providing is the zoning code and overlay district in and of itself. Which, which just seems, if we're contorting to that level of a justification, it seems like this might not be the right avenue to be able to enact this type of building. Now I agree with everything Commissioner Hood, Commissioner and Commissioner Taggy have said about the building. It looks like a great building, but I'm wondering if the correct way to proceed is perhaps to redo the overlay district to determine what type of buildings the community wants in this area. Personally, like Commissioner, a former Commissioner, Commissioner Lindicky, he seemed to be really against overlay districts specifically, the he seemed to be really against overlay districts, specifically the ones for students around St. Thomas. But I think this shows sort of the burden that it places on actual development. But the truth of the matter is that there is an overlay district. And and it's sort of not being respected by allowing this building to go in. I'm not saying that the building in and of itself doesn't belong there. I'm just saying, like, I think we feel I feel like we've jumped a few steps in terms of if if the process is to be respected, I feel like we've we've jumped a few steps before allowing this. And that's I feel like that's that's where I'm having to disconnect. I agree with Commissioner Taggyup that there are ways to say that because of, you know, the lot size and and the corner lot. But but there are a lot of other buildings or lot sizes that meet this within the overlay district. I don't know how far west it goes, but I'm just thinking about the the Chipotle Building or the building in front of the Chipotle Building or the CBS property that are really large in size that still sort of didn't go as high and, you know, as big as this. So I'll just leave it at that. If there are any additional comments, otherwise we can go ahead and take a take a vote. Okay, seeing none. Sonya, I think we are ready for a vote. So again, the the motion coming out of committee is to approve the conditional use permit for 59 feet 10 inches and to approve the the three variance requests for front yard setback, building footprint and totals for for variances, total building size above ground and building height.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Saeed?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
No, and Ms. Sigworth has my rationale.
Commissioner Taggyup?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Nine to one.
All right. So that motion is approved. Thanks, everybody, for your time and discussion on that matter. Moving on, Commissioner Baker.
Thanks, Chair. Our next item was 402 Front Avenue. It was a conditional use permit for supportive housing facility for up to 17 residents with modification of the required distance from another or other congregate living facilities. This site is a vague, the site has been vacant. It was rezoned to RM2 in 1975. The applicant is reposing to construct the two story supportive housing facility for up to 17 residents on Front Avenue. The site plan demonstrates that there are six guest rooms provided, living and dining areas, bathrooms, laundry facilities, as well as a garage. Staff found that all conditions were met for the conditional use permit, except for one, which states the facility shall be a minimum distance of 1,320 feet from any of other of the following congregate living facilities with more than six adult residents. Staff also highlighted that this condition can be met with the requested modification of a required minimum distance from any other congregate living facility of 950 feet. There were two people who spoke in favor of the application and no one who spoke in opposition of the application during the public hearing. There were no letters of support and one letter in opposition of the application. The District Council recommended approval of the project. The zoning committee voted 6-0 to approve staff's recommendation for the conditional use permit for supportive housing facility for up to 17 residents at 402 Front Avenue with modification of the required distance from other congregate living facilities of 950 feet, with one condition that the final plans be approved by the zoning administrator.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Baker. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, the motion coming out of committee is to approve the conditional use permit for supportive housing. Sonya, could we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Joy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggyup?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. So that motion is approved for a conditional use permit for supportive housing at 402 Front. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. We have one one other item. It was 1945 Rome Avenue. It was a lot split. The zoning administrator approved the lot split and the owners of the adjoining property appealed the final approval. So in an effort to get more information and ensure all committee members' questions were answered, the zoning committee voted 6-0 to lay this item over to the next committee meeting. So we do not have a recommendation to come for the planning commission at this time for that item. And I guess last lastly, I just want to say thanks to everyone. This is officially my last meeting. I am transitioning off of the planning commission because I am moving outside of the city limits. I have I have appreciated the work and I'll spirit along long comments that I share with my colleagues on zoning committee. And just to say to everyone, I have a strong bias. The zoning committee is where it's at. I love zoning committee, the cases, the dialogue between our colleagues, the back and forth. I've learned so much since I've been on the planning commission. And I just wanted to say thank you for all of you all. And also, please stay strong in the work. It's hard work and sometimes you you get you don't get the level of appreciation because inevitably, when you're doing this work, there's someone in the community that may not be happy with your decision in your vote. So I still appreciate all that you're doing and appreciate all of that you all will continue to do to make St. Paul what it is. I am, my family and I are moving to move to Brooklyn Park. And St. Paul is definitely near and dear to my heart, moving here from Atlanta. And only living in St. Paul, I I love it. I appreciate it. There's so much still work to do, but great community. And so thank you all for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you for that, Commissioner Baker. I'm going to hold my remarks on your last meeting here until we get to the end of the agenda. But I don't want to minimize how much of a loss it is to 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 have you leave the committee and the commission. So we'll come back to that. But moving on to the next item on the agenda is the Comp Plan Committee. And I believe Commissioner Grill is gone. So I will either turn to Commissioner Presley or Commissioner Holt. For an update.
Sorry, go ahead. Please, please repeat what you're asking for.
Oh, just an update on any past planning, Comp Plan meetings and any future Comp Plan meetings.
So our last comprehensive planning meeting was primarily a presentation about requesting an industrial zoning study for the throughout the city of St. Paul. So we got a presentation from staff on that. And I did not familiarize myself with what's coming up next.
All right. Thank you for that, Commissioner Holt. Next item on the agenda is, one second.
I should probably add, which kind of goes with the thing you just said. So we also selected two vice chairs, so myself and Commissioner Presley, so.
Thank you for that. And it's my understanding that Commissioner Grill, based on her comments, would be stepping down as chair. And so eventually, I think you Commissioner Holt and Commissioner Presley will either serve as co-chairs or one as chair and the other one as vice chair.
Correct.
Next item on the agenda is Transportation Committee. I know Commissioner Rizberg cannot be here today. I know Commissioner Underwood cannot be here today. So I will turn either to Mr. Dermody, if he's present, or otherwise, to one of the two other members, I believe, is Commissioner Said. Or I believe the other member is Commissioner Moore for an update on the last meeting.
Chair, this is Commissioner Said. We have no meeting on until next month 9th, 8th, 9th. And again, to be determined, no meeting.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Task Force and Liaison Reports. Commissioner, if Commissioner DeJoy is present.
Yes, I'm still here. We did not meet in the month of July. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 17th. And in the chat, I have pasted the the website for the Hillcrest Community Advisory Committee and the master plan. There's a lot of information there if you're interested, and you can always log on to the meeting for August 17th. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Grill, again, is not present to provide us with the other task force. Moving on to old business and then new business. And so at this point is when I will just say my comments about Commissioner Baker. His friendship and his guidance throughout his time in the commission have been invaluable, especially to me. He has at numerous times stepped up to help me better navigate the role of chair and better serve as a chair. So I am very thankful for that. And I am gonna deeply miss him and his contributions. If anybody else would like to say any comments, I see that a lot of people have already commented on the chat. But Chair, Commissioner Baker, I I mean, it's going to be a huge loss. And I wish you the best. So I will keep your number and I will text you if I need anything. So I hope that's okay. With that said, if there's no comments on, I know, I know, everybody from the, I missed the zoning committee this past meeting. I was out of the state. But I I'm sure you guys had an in-depth discussion about how much he will be missed there in his guidance. I know Commissioner Riley, and with all his experience, will step up to the challenge of leading the zoning committee, which I know he had Commissioner Baker got sort of roped into it. And I know he sort of roped in Commissioner Riley. But I think Commissioner Riley had a better has a better understanding of just how contentious and just how much discussion can occur in one of those meetings. So with that said, with Commissioner Baker stepping away, there will be an opening in zoning committee. I know someone, one or two people a while back had reached out about possibly joining zoning committee. So I'll reach out to those two people first. But if there is any interest by any other commissioner, please go ahead and send me an email. So then I can discuss it with the director of who could best fit that role. Just as a forewarning, it is the last meeting took four hours based on an email I received. So they are really intensive at times. And so it is probably in terms of commission matters, it is probably the most time intensive out of all the committees, probably even more time intensive than the commission in and of itself. So if it's something that interests you, please go ahead and email me so that then we can consider someone to fill that role. Otherwise, if there are no additional comments, we will go ahead and end the July 23rd, 2021 St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Thanks, everybody, for your thoughts and comments today. And thanks for members of the public for coming in today to provide their testimony. Everybody have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.